Right, Mr. Curtis, do you want to resume?
Sure, okay, so the three pager, the only thing I want to say, two things, is that the percentages on the far right column are the percentage increase from the FY08 final voted budget, which is the middle column, to the FY09 town final recommended budget. It's not from the what we actually spent in '08 to what we proposed to spend in '09, it's from what we proposed in '08 to what we proposed, propose in '09. And the other thing is, this is a little confusing, but the '08 final voted budget items which would ordinarily include a pay increase don't have them because it hadn't been negotiated yet. And so, the pay increase from '08 to '09 may appear in some instances to be eight and a half percent. That doesn't mean that people in '09 got an eight and a half percent pay raise, that's the cumulative pay raise from '08 to '09. So now, what we're going to do is, I'll read the article for the individual motions. Pat Bruch, who is the absolute master of budget detail, will be prepared to answer your questions about, if any, about the, you know, the individual line items.
So, go ahead, Mr. Curtis.
So, starting off, first moved that under general government, items 010 to 099, the sum of $4,295,433 having already been appropriated under special warrant articles, the sum of $5,360,945 be appropriated to be raised by general tax. Set amount includes $150,000 of water indirect costs that will be funded from water receipts and $120,000 of sewer indirect costs that will be funded from sewer receipts.
Is there any discussion on general government? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimously approved. Public safety, Mr. Curtis.
Moved that under public safety, items 110 through 195, the sum of $10,907,386 be appropriated to be raised by general tax.
Is there discussion on public safety? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Belmont Public Schools.
Moved that under Belmont Public Schools, item 200, the sum of $38,470,916 be appropriated to be raised by general tax.
Ellen Krishman, Precinct 2. I've been asked by a couple of members of my precinct to ask this question, and it's more a policy question regarding items for which the town has a grant this year. When the budgeting comes around next year, will those items be listed as level service or will they be listed as level funded?
Are you asking specifically about kindergarten?
I am.
Full day kindergarten. Well, full day kindergarten is actually out of the budget. I mean, it's outside this budget. The budget that I just read does not include full day kindergarten.
This is just a, I guess this is a budgeting policy question then. That's why I used it as a generic kind of question. So, if you want to use full day kindergarten as an example, if this year we are receiving a grant to, let's say, 100% of full day kindergarten, and it's therefore not costing taxpayers anything, how will that be classified next year? Will it appear in the budget as a level service?
No. In other words, if full day kindergarten were to show up in the budget next year, the warrant committee, I'm sure, would consider that enhanced service.
Mr. Missel, did you want to say anything, or is that a sufficient answer for the schools?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mercier.
Donald Mercier, Precinct 8. This has been something we've been discussing in the past. I'd like to know where it's at, maybe the superintendent can tell us. On the town side and on the school side, we both have two building managers, and I'm wondering what has been going on with these two departments not getting together so we can afford to possibly get somebody with more experience. The school department is in the business of educating, not managing real estate. The other item that comes up in this same area is, I don't know if the school department is still mowing their lawns, or is it Public Works mowing their lawns? And that should be one item, one area, that one department should be mowing all the lawns. I'd like the school department to answer this question with the guiding, particularly the building manager. There are other departments also that we could bring together rather than having two of everything. We could reduce the costs and increase the quality of those positions. I'd like an answer from the superintendent.
Mr. Curtis, do you want to?
Yeah, I can give, Mr. Mercier, I can give a sort of historical answer. I've been on the warrant committee long enough now to know this one. That the, one of the items that's been under discussion for a long time is, we call consolidation of school and town services. It's a difficult topic, not because anybody's uncooperative, it's just hard to think your way through all of the ins and outs and permutations of it, but the notion that you just raised of consolidating services that may appear to be duplicative is something that we are and have been talking about. So, there's nothing, nothing immediate on the horizon.
I brought this up probably 15 years ago, and we're still in the talking stages. I happen to man, my job is managing real estate, and I don't understand what is so complicated about one department managing real estate.
Mr. Mercier, I have a question.
Yes, I'd like that question answered, why this is not bringing together. You know, you're looking for overrides, but the most common sense things are not being taken care of, and this is one of them.
Ms. Bruch, do you want to?
Well, I mean, no, I mean, I've said what I will say, is that this is, it's not an easy thing, and I would not agree that it's common sense simply to say that we're going to combine two positions, and there are many positions in terms of human resources, buildings and facilities, and things like that. It's a, it's a, a topic that is, and I'm not even sure how much money would save if we combined them, but it is a topic that we are discussing, and it's one that's been on the table for a long time, and it's one that the warrant committee will return to.
Can you explain to what the hangup has been? You said it's been difficult, but we haven't heard the details of what the difficulty is after 15 or 18 years of doing this.
Well, I mean, I actually haven't been on any of the, I wouldn't say that there's a particular hangup. I mean, does anybody else want to comment who's been involved in the process?
I think Pat, Pat's been involved in the discussions.
Mr. Moderator, Patricia Bruch, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2, member of the warrant committee. I have actually been on this consolidation subcommittee for a number of years. We are looking at four specific areas. One of them is in building consolidation, one is in IT consolidation, one is in human resources, and the fourth one would be in the financial area. This is something that school committees and boards of selectmen and warrant commit, the warrant committee have been looking at since around 1992. There are a lot of issues involved in how to do this. So, about two years ago, a fairly active subcommittee formed with members of the school committee, the warrant committee, the town administrator. We've met fairly regularly. We made a decision initially that we would concentrate on the building consolidation. After a whole lot of work, we realized that there would be very little savings in consolidating. There really is not a lot of duplication of effort in terms of people doing the same job twice. You probably would need the same number of employees that we have now. There might be some efficiencies that can be affected, there might be a little bit more equipment that could be shared, and we are continuing to look at this. The area that we found the greatest return would be in the area of information technology. And the subcommittee actually came to the warrant committee and board of selectmen this year with a proposal that those two departments be merged. However, there would be a requirement that there would be one additional person hired to oversee the structure of both departments. And at some point in time, there would be need for more employees, and this is mainly because the town is being run very, very, very leanly in terms of its technology. At the time that the study was done and the recommendation was made, the budgets were pretty much underway, and there was absolutely no way we could find another $100,000 to fund an additional person this year to take care of that. That is very much on the table for next year, so I think that we will see some discussion and work towards a unified information technology department next year. We already have that in terms of capital budget, we just want to make it in terms of operating budget. In terms of building consolidation, we are really looking at it. I can tell you, I am one of the strongest proponents of this, but I can tell you that it's not going to save us money, and it's probably not going to save us personnel.
I know one thing from my own experience, which I've been on some of these committees with the guiding the schools, and there's been problems with the buildings, and I think the problem with the buildings is the quality of the individual that you're able to hire for the money that you're offering is not enough. Even if you took those two salaries, you might be able to save $25,000 a year, but I'll tell you, you'd greatly improve of the, of the people that would apply for the job and the quality of the policing and the managing of those properties.
I'll turn to the woman on my left. I think we've covered, I'll turn to the woman on my left.
You cannot manage those properties with the salaries that you're paying. You need somebody of a higher quality and bring those together.
Thank you, Mr. Mercier. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Heidi Steiner in Precinct 5, and this question is specific to the Wellington School. I'm wondering if there's any money in the budget. Well, I should say that, as you all know, the school was closed one day this past winter, and school was actually canceled, the children were not relocated. And is there any money in the budget, if this problem happens this coming winter, to transport the kids elsewhere, and where would they go? Thank you.
Not at this moment, there's not specifically, but each individual circumstance will be taken care of on a case-by-case basis, and everybody should please vote yes when we have the debt exclusion for the Wellington School so that we don't have this problem anymore.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anne Marie Lambert, Precinct 8. Question on if the town or school receives grants for core services, particularly for textbooks in the school budget, do those get listed, how do those get reflected in the revenue and expense parts of the budget?
Mr. Missel, did you want to?
Yeah, I think, Jerry, do you want to come up and address that?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I'm Jerry Missel, Director of Finance Administration for the school department. In the figures that Mr. Curtis is showing here, they are not reflected. They are outside of the town appropriation. However, in our school budget, in the introductory pages of our school budget, which we post on the website, we list every grant we have coming in, whether it's state or federal, and then with specific programs that the grants apply to, such as the federal IDEA grant for special education, on that program page, we show at the very bottom how much is coming from that grant for that program. We even show on the revolving accounts how much is being raised for bus transportation, how much is being raised for athletic fees, et cetera, and show how that affects the cost of the program. We deduct that from the total program and show how much is left over to be appropriated by town funds. So, even though it's not here, it is in all of our documentation that we showed to the school committee, and when we make budget presentations, which began back on January 15th.
So, with the conversation on the previous question about the kindergarten full day, if that's funded from the outside, that's not listed, that's listed as an expanded service. But if core functions such as textbooks and these other items you mentioned are funded outside of this budget, that's not listed as a decreased services from the town budget. Do I have that right?
I'm not fully, I don't think I fully understand your question. Try again.
I'm concerned when there's an increase in the amount of grants funding core services, that there's transparency, and the transparency that you described is good. I'm just trying to understand from the type of presentation that Mr. Curtis made, whether that level of transparency is there as well, and I appreciate your pointing me to the school budget preliminary pages.
The expansion to full day K this year is definitely an enhanced service.
Sure.
The school budget is funding the core service that we've had all along, the additional cost of the going to full day Ks being borne by a $200,000 state grant, and the $1,600 per student fee that's being raised, which we anticipate will raise an additional $340,000.
Right, I guess I'm just saying by the same logic, I agree with you, I understand that would be an expanded service by the same logic. If existing core services are now funded outside of town revenues that are in the revenue side of the budget, then that would, by the similar logic, one could consider showing them as decreased services because they're funded outside. But I appreciate the transparency that those pages, and you're pointing me to those.
Thank you.
In the material that we passed out, the Town Meeting Handout, we do show the fact that for '09, the budget is being reduced by $2.4 million because of funds that we do raise through fees, application of credits for special education from the lab collaborative, application of the fund balances and school choice, which we had been a member of, but we no longer participate in, but we're using that remaining money. So, we do demonstrate, even on the material that went to Town Meeting Members, that this budget would have been $2.4 million higher had we not used these outside sources.
And outside sources for textbooks would also appear in a future budget, should those?
I don't know of any specific grant that funds textbooks. Most of our grants fund staffing.
There's one under discussion down the hall at the PTO, that's the one I'm concerned about.
Yeah, our level, our textbook account, like our supply account, like our equipment account, is level funded within this budget.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Amy Fawcett, Precinct 1. I just have a clarification question. I'm looking at the line item numbers on the sheet that we just got, recognizing that we just got it tonight, so I may be missing something. I don't have 010 through 099 as general government, it's 1100 to 1470. Am I looking at the wrong sheet, the one you just handed out? Are the item numbers different?
No.
And the totals seem to be different in some places and not in others?
No, the totals aren't. The totals shouldn't be different. Barbara's coming, good, thanks.
Barbara Hag.
Some are, some aren't.
Oh, I see what the difference is, it's munis.
It's munis.
Barbara.
Hello, it's Barbara Hag, Town Accountant. Good question. These were numbers that we had used before, but we converted all of our accounting system to munis, which, which actually is the Mass. State law, the account numbers. The numbers were continued within the article, and I apologize, but there was no easy way of doing it. I probably should have put the prior numbers so it would be easier. And when you're looking at, I think, general government, if you look at the spreadsheet, in prior years, I put the pensions and health benefits under general government. This year, I broke them apart, I thought they made a little more sense that way, because people think of, if I look at general government as $10 million, that is not truly reflective of town hall offices, because $6 million is really for pensions and health insurance. But those two numbers together are the $10 million. See how there's general government, and then right below it, there's pensions and insurance? I think that's what your question was, ma'am.
Yeah, well, that would be in the neighborhood of $9,600,000, is what I'm looking at, right? General government, it says $3,532,386 on the sheet, and, since the numbers don't match, it's really hard to figure out what's what in the, in the line items and the totals.
Okay. The $5,360 is, these two numbers together, the approximately, I said, I said $10 million, but it's actually 9.6, less what we voted last, two nights ago, for pensions, and less what we voted for the elected salaries. So, if we, if you looked at the total, 9.6, less those two votes, you come up with the $5.1 million.
That's, it's just very confusing, because we're looking at different item numbers and different totals than what we have in our hand, that's all.
Thank you.
And we just got this tonight.
Other discussion, Mr. Hyam?
James Hyam, Precinct 1, move the question.
Hyam has moved the question, it's not debatable, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of terminating debate on this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. So, I'll now turn to a vote on the motion itself, Belmont Public Schools. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved. Mr. Curtis, Minuteman?
Moved that under Minuteman Regional School, item 205, the sum of $687,857 be appropriated to be raised by general tax.
Discussion. Ms. Mann.
Anne Mann, Precinct 4. The Minuteman, I don't know if all Town Meeting Members know, is $26,000 per student per year. That's two and a half times what it costs to send a child to the Belmont Public Schools. They don't have to report to a warrant committee or a school committee because there's several towns involved in the Minuteman, which is the most expensive vocational school in Massachusetts by far. And I was talking to some other Town Meeting Members that are not from Belmont, but from towns that send their students to Minuteman, and they find that the cost is exploding. And so, what we were trying to do was get together and ask Town Meeting Members to turn down this budget. Now, I know it's not discretionary, but it is so long as the other towns agree to pay for it, but if enough towns were to turn it down, they'd actually have to go back and find ways to save money and reduce their budget. And I know it's a lot to ask, and Minuteman is a wonderful school, and a lot of us think a lot of it, but they aren't under the same budget constraints that we are, because they don't feel the pressure. And as homeowners that are trying to save our taxes, I would ask that we reject that. And if it does nothing else, at least it sends a sign that we think it's getting too expensive, and we'd like them to try to reduce their budget. Thank you.
Donald Mercy, Precinct 8. On that, on that subject, from my.
Mr. Mercier, yeah.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
From my limited knowledge on this subject, you know, I understand that Minuteman is expensive, but also, the way the cost per pupil is calculated is different between this school and our school, and maybe the other schools, so the numbers, the numbers don't tell the whole story, because I understand some of the mechanical work that's done on our schools is paid for by the town, not the school department. Now, maybe out in the Minuteman schools, maybe they have to pay their own out of that $26,000. There is one discrepancy there amongst many others. You cannot make a judgment until you've got the whole picture on the table.
Actually, Mr. Moderator?
Please, Curtis.
Minuteman is expensive, and is a perennial topic at Town Meeting and on the warrant committee. One thing that we hope to do is, this year, is work, have a subgroup of the warrant committee work with a small group on the school committee, and at least one school, school committee member has already volunteered for this, to try to understand, for our purposes, better understand the Minuteman budget. We don't really know why it is as expensive as it is. I'm not sure that they really know why it's so expensive. But I don't think that turning down the Minuteman budget this year will have much of an impact on anything. That's all I'll say.
Ms. Olson.
Thomasine Olson, Precinct 5. Many of you know I have personal experience with Minuteman, as my eldest son, who lives across the street from Phil, graduated from Minuteman. And I'd say two of the issues that we need to remember is that when we send children to Minuteman, they go primarily as special ed students. And if you look at our special ed budget here in Belmont, the special ed student goes with more services, and therefore, we are already paying more at Minuteman for those students. Secondly, as Mr., I forgot his name, Mercier, already pointed out, Minuteman's budget includes all of their own leasehold improvements. Our budgets, our school department budget, oftentimes when we build a building, it's on the other side of the, all of our debt exclusions, they're all on the, on the general government side, as opposed to being within the school budget. So, those are two things. I also wanted to mention about four years ago, I think, we, we took up the issue of Minuteman, and their teachers make, I think they were making a good 20% less than our teachers. So, before we think about not funding Minuteman, I think we ought to recognize the pro, the service it provides to our students here in Belmont.
Mr. Younger, and then Mr. Scali.
Tom Younger, Town Administrator, and also a resident of Precinct 5. Just a factual statement, there are 16 communities under the Minuteman program. You would need two-thirds vote to basically send, two-thirds of the towns defeating the budgets to send it back. Based on from what I've seen for the assessments for all 16 communities, I would bet that probably at best four would reject them, because other towns have had a decrease or their increases have been minimal.
Mr. Scali.
Joe Scali, Precinct 2. First, I'd like to tell you that there are plenty of Belmont graduates from Minuteman, one of them being your police chief. The other thing is, the Minuteman budget was only increased from last year by 1.5%. Your school budget has increased by, what, 3.8? A lot of the expenses are incurred by the school, not by outside services. And if, if I am allowed, I'd like to introduce Dr. McQuillan, the Superintendent of the Schools, to speak.
For a brief, for a brief statement?
For a brief statement, yes.
By all means.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Joe, and thank you to Belmont for being a member of Minuteman. I've been, tomorrow is my 10th month anniversary as the Superintendent of Minuteman, and I was pleased to be here to see Mr. Hall being recognized, and I intend to address some of the issues and concerns that you've expressed here tonight head-on. In my 10 months at Minuteman, I've spent a lot of time listening, listening to town representatives, select board members, warrant committee members, superintendents, and I will be the first to agree with you that Minuteman is too expensive. We are the most expensive cost per student in the way that it's being reported by the Department of Ed, and that cannot be sustained. And the reason that we're too expensive is quite simple. We have too many adults and not enough students. Our enrollment challenges over the last few years are being addressed, again, in some very specific ways, but there are three factors that determine what your assessment is. And your assessment is up about 31 or 32% this year. There's been about a 20, those three factors that influence your assessment are student enrollment, and what percentage of the member district enrollment your students represent, and that has increased substantially over the last year. We've had about a 29% increase in the number of students from Belmont attending Minuteman. The other factor involves what's called the municipal growth factor, and you may not hear that in your budget discussions, but we hear it quite often as a regional school district. We have 16 different towns, it has been mentioned. We also have 31 additional towns that send us students on a tuition basis, and that tuition is used to reduce the cost of the budget and keep assessments down as much as possible. My role as the superintendent is to look at ways in which to improve the efficiency of the school while maintaining high-quality vocational, technical, and career majors. We offer over 23 different majors at Minuteman. I believe there are six mentioned in some of the material I've seen tonight. About 55% of our students last year went on to post-secondary education, about 35% to 40% went on directly to a career. We are engaged in a long-term master planning process right now that includes a number of different areas that I've heard expressed of concern by member towns, and I'm looking forward to working with the subcommittee that Chris has mentioned, and I will be transparent with you about Minuteman. I will be communicative with you, and I'm also looking forward to collaborating in some new and different ways that may improve the access of Belmont High School students to Minuteman in different ways than simply leaving Belmont and becoming a full-time Minuteman student. It's a very expensive proposition. I'm not going to fix it in one year, but I'm going to work with you to fix it over the next three to five years. And I'd be glad to answer any other questions that may be of your, of concern of yours, and I'll stop. and I'll stop there.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Semuels.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Superintendent, could you please clarify how many Belmont resident students are presently attending Minuteman?
31.
Thank you.
Ms. Callanan.
Thank you. Kate Callanan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7, and member of the warrant committee. I did attend the budget hearing for Minuteman this year and just want to encourage town meeting members this evening to support the Minuteman budget. I was particularly pleased at the budget hearing to hear Superintendent Bukilin speak about the changes that he would like to see come to Minuteman, and there was discussion at the budget hearing by members of other communities that they would like to get together and work with the superintendent to try to reduce the costs. And I think that's the, the kind of a message that we want to hear and that we want to work towards, and so I look forward also to being an active member of the warrant committee subcommittee that would look into Minuteman costs, but I do urge support this evening of the Minuteman budget. Thank you.
Ms. Marsh.
Hi, Nancy Marsh, Precinct 6, Town Member, Meeting Member. I'd like to speak in favor of the Minuteman Vocational Science High School. My husband is actually a graduate of Western Illinois University and was trained as an industrial educator, and during his time there, we were married at that time, we were made keenly aware of the difference of cost per credit hour of educating someone in, for instance, English composition as opposed to the industrial arts courses. Industrial arts courses such as those are taught at Minuteman are very expensive. The overhead is quite high, the, the number of computers, the, for instance, the equipment to teach automotive repair. All of that is very, very costly. So comparing a traditional course at the high school, for instance, with a Minuteman course, it's just not apples to apples, just the initial outlay is much, much higher, and that should be taken into consideration. The other thing is, Minuteman is a wonderful course, source for adult education. I've personally taken some excellent computer and internet courses out there as well as a Spanish class. So it shouldn't be thought of in simply the 33 students who are there during the day. There's a plethora of courses that are available in the evenings, and it's a wonderful resource. And I think as the cost of college tuition increases, you're going to see more and more people thinking practically about career-oriented education at the high school level. I hope you'll vote in favor of Minuteman. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Paul Wolf, Precinct 1. I just want to add one thing. You know, I appreciate the superintendent's attendance, and I just want to share one experience I had about 11 or 12 years ago in Arlington, which went through a similar kind of process. Every year, there was always a question about the increases that were disproportionate on the Minuteman side versus the school side. And, and the superintendent at the time was quite generous with his time and gave a very effective presentation that was very helpful. At the time, however, Arlington did what I think was, what was really being presented, which is to recognize that we can also vote down the budget, which really doesn't effectively change the budget because it has to be agreed upon by all the member schools, but it does send a message. And I think that's what the people were really trying to address is that it's a message that we can send to start the process, and it doesn't actually change the final budget.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is approved. Mr. Curtis, Public Services.
Move that under Public Services, items 302 through 366, the sum of $401,161 having already been appropriated under a special warrant article for Chapter 90, and the sum of $6,881,317 having already been appropriated under a special article for sewer enterprise, and the sum of $4,798,393 having already been appropriated under a special article for water enterprise, the sum of $7,981,207.12 be appropriated to be raised by general tax.
Is there a discussion? Ms. Page.
Jennifer Page. Don't even know my own last name. Jennifer Page, Precinct 3. I rise to express a concern about one small component of this very large endeavor that has been dropped from this year's budget. I think that, I want to say first of all, that I think that what the Public Services Department is doing is, is wonderful. I think that they're just doing a fabulous job on what appears to be a very, very difficult series of fiscal constraints. The thing that I'm concerned about is a very small program which was originally budgeted this year for $13,800 and which is now budgeted at zero. And that is the, what's called the tree planting program. Some of you may remember that a year or two ago, Leslie Aiken stood up in town meeting based on the somewhat more expanded budget materials that we had at the time and said, what is an urban forest? And Peter Castenino told us about the urban forest that we have here in Belmont. It has about between 8,000 and 10,000 public shade trees, and of those, we lose approximately 80 to 100 every year. And the tree planting program endeavors to plant about 120 trees a year with the assumption that about 20 aren't going to make it. It was proposed for $13,800 this year, and I understand that, looking at the fine print on my computer, that that is now at zero. I learned on Monday evening that an announcement was being, was, was made in the selectments meeting that a private, an anonymous donor was going to contribute the sufficient funds to cover this year's tree planting program. So first, I would like to know if that's true. It is true? Okay. Well, in that case, we are fortunate indeed to have a resident who understands the significance of the program and can offer this temporary solution. But I think we need to ask ourselves, what were we thinking when we eliminated it? And if it is off the books for this coming year, what happens to it next year? Many years ago, some of you will remember that some derogatory remarks were made about tree huggers in town meeting, and I'm pleased to tell you that I am a proud tree hugger. I think it's worth considering what it is that trees do for us in this community, and I ask you to consider what it is that the Union of Concerned Scientists tells us about our future. We can anticipate by the year 2040 that in the Boston area, the number of very hot days during the summer, that is to say, 90 degrees or more, will rise significantly to about 18 a year. And by the end of this century, we will experience about 60 days a year with temperatures over 90 degrees. And if you think about temperatures of over 100, we have had one such day in the last 30 years, but the projections are that if we do not do anything really significant across the planet to address climate change, that in Boston, we will experience about 24 days a year with temperatures over 100. Now, 100 years from now, I'm not going to be around, and I would guess that not many of you are either, but our children and our grandchildren will.
Can I bring you back to the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what do, what do the, what do these trees do for us? First of all, they reduce our carbon emissions because they sequester carbon, and they do it very effectively. They release oxygen, they provide erosion control, they remove pollutants from the water. Those are pollutants that we have added, by the way, with fertilizer and other things. They enhance the quality of the soil, water, air, they provide wild, wildlife habitats. But the two most important functions that they serve for us in the context of what looms before us are mitigation, that is to say, helping to change the future ahead of us by sequestering carbon, and, and also adaptation for providing shade that will significantly make life better for us, easier for us in this context. So it's also important to note, by the way, that property taxes, the property values tend to be 5 to 15% higher with properties that have good shade trees. It seems to me that this savings of a little over $13,000 is folly, and I think that all of the decision-makers who participated in this are letting us down. I want to believe that the leadership of this town is looking to the future and looking for our safety and our security. And striking out this program is not representative of what I would expect of them. So I'm saying that I'm disappointed, I'm grateful that someone has stepped forward this year to save the program for one year, but I don't want to see a zero on that line next year, and I hope that you all will take steps to make sure that that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Scally has yielded her spot to me because she's going to talk to another issue. Sherri Jones, Precinct 2. It's just a question. If this does not appear as a line item with even $10 in it this year, does that mean it will be in danger of not being discussed next year or somehow being thought of as something that's not necessary? I, I would prefer that we not have a zero there if that would be the case.
No.
Mr. Curtis?
That's the short answer.
I'm sorry?
No. The answer is no. It's not going to be deemed unnecessary or, or having been zeroed out this year, that that's now level services, no money for trees. No, that's not the case.
I, I still think as a matter of precedent that it's probably not a good idea to put it at zero.
Well, you know what? I can't resist one comment, which is that this discussion, which is, I'm just as much in favor of trees as anybody else, but perhaps not as much as Ms. Page, but almost as much as anybody else. Is this illustrates the difficulty of what happens at the very margin of a budget when you frankly don't have enough money to spend? You have to make choices that are hard and unpleasant and have ramifications for somebody.
Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Pasrow, Precinct 3. Not having trees has an effect on all of us, and, and we're losing in Belmont, I don't know if anybody's been clain, brought that up on Monday, we're losing hundreds, I don't know how many acres are we losing, I'd like to do some research on that, but if those aren't replaced in some way, I mean, I don't know how many of you guys know about what's happening in the world, really, but it's, it's, I mean environmentally in the world, and, and we, we, I mean, I don't think, I think we ought to put the money back. I mean, I, I think it should be, I mean, I don't think that people understand what we're doing by cutting a tree budget down to, a $13,000 tree budget down to nothing. It's pretty ridiculous, and, and I, I would, anyway, I have a plan. I have a plan, somebody else has had plans. Anyway, I'd like to see a committee, the tree committee, a committee, and we look at the, look at approaching the people who take down the trees and, and develop a plan that we can work on with Muzzioli and the other people to, to be able to protect the trees we have, and that every tree he takes out, he puts a tree in, and maybe that comes out of some other committee or meeting. But anyway, I propose that we have a plan to take care of that situation, and I don't want to see this down to...
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Scally?
Erin Scally, Precinct 2. My question is on street lighting. Why is it minus 25%?
Question on street lighting.
Excuse me, I was going to ask a similar question perhaps before that's answered, if I could add a clarification in the question.
On the street lighting?
On street lighting.
All right, go ahead, ma'am.
Sarah Gavallian, Precinct 2. I wanted to know whether the efficiencies were actually due to, the change was due to efficiency in lighting or actually changes in the maintenance levels. Perhaps somebody could clarify that.
Right, we have two.
I'm sorry, I was, I was focused on the, on the question about the street lighting, which is really Tom Younger's.
Okay. What some of my...
To answer.
Mr. Younger will answer the two questions, or the, more or less the same question.
Thank you. Tom Younger, Town Administrator, also the author of Reducing the Trees and the Street Lights. For, first, please be aware in the budget process is particularly when budgets are tight, there are items that you can't please or get everything in the budget. Tough decisions have to be made, and we have to make these decisions, and these were my recommendations, and I'll take either the applause or the hit on it, and I just want to be clear on that. First, on the street lighting issue, there is a plan to reduce approximately 50% of the streetlights in Belmont to balance the budget. And that's what the reduction in the streetlight cost is. Obviously, we've had increases in electricity, as you've all seen in your bills, actually, which is funny is that my light bill's been, is increased, but my power's decreased because my daughter's in college for the past year, so maybe I should send the other child to college even though he's three years early just to balance the budget there. But it is a 50% decrease in streetlights. I have done this unfortunately in a previous community I've been in to balance the budget when an override failed. And the process on that, and we'll be working with Mr. Castenino, Tim Richardson, our light department, our police department, on determining which streetlights are reduced. There is a program that I do have to talk with Mr. Richardson about, which is in other towns that have reduced streetlights, where a private individual could pay for the cost of a streetlight. I was just discussing that this week with the town of Reading that has that program, and they explained to me that there was probably a handful of people who have purchased those lights. But we would be reducing the lights in the budget. These are tough choices you have to make when the budgets need to get reduced.
Ms. Scally, does that answer your question?
To a point, Mr. Younger. Yes, I understand what you're saying about reducing it, but would you then, when you do this, let the people know in their neighborhoods which tree, which streetlights they're going to lose and why? I think that would be helpful, rather than just shutting them off.
I'm only laughing because of the streetlight in front of my house, and I'm sure my neighbors will know.
Maybe that should go first.
Right. I don't disagree with you, but I have four neighbors right around me that might disagree with you on that one. But no, the neighbors would be notified about that also. Thank you.
Ma'am, that answered your question, did it?
Not entirely, actually. Sorry, so just on the subject of streetlights.
Sure.
You say that there's a 5-0, 50% reduction in the actual lights, or is this...
There would be actually 50% of the lights generally would be shut off. If the budget number comes in a little lighter, it might be 48%, but generally, 50% of the lights would be turned off. That's what's in the budget.
And is the policy to reduce them systematically throughout the community or through residential versus business sectors first?
The, the program which I've done before, and I'm sure it'll be very similar with Public Works and Public Safety, the simplest way to do it is if you're doing 50% or 33%, it's, you know, every other or every third. But obviously, you have to take into account public safety for where the light's located. If the lights are located at a busy intersection or busy corner, that may not be where you want to delete it. So each street would be actually identified, and Public Safety and Public Works and Light Department will review those areas to make the determination whether those need to be shut off.
And just one further follow-up question, if I might. Does any reduction come about through the use of, say, low-level lighting or lighting which actually turns off, for example, which is sensitive to movement, for example, in some areas?
It could. We're looking at all very options to try to reduce that, but generally, at this point, it does appear it'll be 50%.
No, I don't think my question was answered, though.
No, your answer to the question is if there, we would obviously look, Light Department would look at any type of way to make, you know, savings on, on the Light Department. I can't speak for that one specifically.
All right, so for example, if you did have lights which were sensitive to movement, which only went on when there was somebody or something in the vicinity, would that actually cost, be cost-effective?
It could possibly, but it depends on the particular area. I don't know the answer for that one.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hyam.
James Hyam, Precinct 1. Move the question.
Question has been moved. It's not debatable, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I don't think it passes.
Jan Cruz, Precinct Three. I have a question relating to building services. I was wondering how much of the repair service to the buildings and to the major building repairs, how much is that in fiscal year '09 due to repairs to the Homer Building, Town Hall, and the Fire Department Headquarters?
That one's too detailed even for me. Kevin, do you have the answer to that?
Mr. Looney.
Hi, I'm Kevin Looney. I'm the Building Service Manager for the town side. Could you just repeat that question again, please?
I was just curious, in the fiscal year '09 budget, how much of the repair service to the buildings or the major building repairs are due to repairs needed to the Homer Building, Town Hall, and the Fire Department Headquarters?
I wish I could give you a direct answer to that. What that, that account actually takes in unexpected repairs that need to be made to We're still debugging some of the problems that we have in the fire station and in the Homer Building, basically because of the HVAC system. It's an ongoing problem in all our buildings with HVACs. You never get what you think you're going to get right away. And when you're debugging these buildings, you discover problems. I'd like to think we could eliminate them from the beginning, but we haven't been able to, unfortunately. So I don't have a direct number for you, unfortunately.
Ms. Moderator, can I ask a question that's related to this that was in the Warrant Committee report for this year?
Yes.
I noticed that there is, in the report, which by the way, I thought was very good, I appreciated the transparency and the clearness of it, as well as the capital budget report this year. It discusses about the fact that there was some concerns with these particular buildings due to the design process and construction, management policies. And I was curious as to whether or not the town is on the hook for paying the repairs that were not made correct to begin with, or is someone else being held accountable?
We try to make the contractor responsible as much as we possibly can. And sometimes, though, you have to go and sue them if you cannot get them to agree to make right what should have been right the first time around, which in some cases costs, it's prohibitive in legal fees, unfortunately.
I also noticed in that report that it mentioned that there is already some potential issues with the new senior center, even though it hasn't been built yet. And I'm just, it mentions that there is a recommendation to hire an additional staff person with skills in building management, construction, supervision, which I'm assuming that may be some of the issues related to these problems. And I was wondering if there's actual plans to hire someone so we can avoid some of this in the future, or if it's just something that's being studied.
I think the additional person would be, right now, you need to understand it. My department is made up of myself, an administrative assistant, and two custodians. I believe we need more people to maintain these buildings. One of the things that happens when you put new buildings together, they're much more sophisticated than the older buildings. It don't have things like central HVAC systems, elevators, sprinkler systems. All of these have to be inspected. And it's easy enough to say that you have a contract with an inspector, but you have to schedule all that and make sure all of that gets done. And that gets into time and effort from my part, and hopefully whatever we have for extra people. I'm not expecting trouble at the senior center. I think they are commissioning that building for the HVAC. I think that should do a lot to eliminate any problems before we move into the building. And I'm hopeful that will happen. I really don't want to go through the debugging system again that we have in the other two buildings.
Okay, thank you. I also just wanted to make a comment that I really appreciated the fact that this year's budget included the percentage increase and decrease, and I hope that that carries forward in the future. It makes it much easier to, at a quick, at a glance, understand where the increases and decreases are happening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Schaefer.
I wish the energy costs weren't so blatant, but they are, unfortunately.
Ms. Schaefer.
I want to talk briefly, ask a couple of questions.
Did you identify yours?
Oh, excuse me. Penelope Schaefer, Precinct Seven. Snow removal, which is a highly volatile year-to-year amount. And so I guess my first question, and I noticed, again, thank you for the percentage increases and decreases, it's up 10.4 percent in the budget. Do we know what we actually spent this year? It looks like the number's kind of a plug number because it's exactly what was budgeted for.
For snow removal?
For snow removal, yes.
Or minus $265,000, that I can tell you. I have that right in front of me here.
We've spent that much more than we budgeted?
We've spent $265,000 more basically than we budgeted, that's correct. We haven't received a request at the Warrant Committee yet for a reserve fund transfer. And so you haven't asked this, but in the reserve fund.
Yeah.
We have $452,623 still available.
So that'll take half of it.
That should cover it.
Yeah, okay. So that is your justification for increasing it by at least 10 percent and just because expenses, I mean, I know that we, it's hard to forecast the snow, but if we look back at '07, we spent a lot less because of the weather, in part.
Patricia Bruch, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, member of the Warrant Committee. As is our normal practice, we're trying to continue with a fairly level snow removal budget, and the spikes that happen in the years, that there's a spike, for example, in this year, would be covered from the reserve fund. The 10.4 percent increase that you see in this particular budget are three things that we would generally cover. First is there are some new collective bargaining changes in the budget, one of which includes an on-call stipend. Another is the increase in the snow removal contract for outside contractors. And this year, that, for '09, that budget went up. And the third is a $33,000 increase in sand and salt, which is a large percent increase in that particular line item. And we do try to continue keeping up with the sand and salt inflationary increases, even though for labor and other things, we might try to keep it fairly level.
So what was the first thing you gave to the contractual?
An on-call stipend for employees. In other words, they don't, they're not necessarily here, but they're on call for the.
And so they get paid for being on calls?
That's collectively bargained. And it's new this year.
What is that? How much is that?
$1,000, I think I can look in the budget book.
Okay. Is this $1,000 per person, per year, per event, per, for what?
No, I think that's the budgeted amount, but I'll tell you in one second. Page number, page 30. $7,210 total.
For the year?
For the year.
Oh, okay. All right. And the 10.4 percent for recreation is coming from other reasons because salt and sand is not relevant to them. And I assume that we don't have on-call for parks and recreation. There's no on-call stipend for them either, right? So why is recreation, parks and recreation costs going up 10 percent also? Parks and facilities, excuse me. I read, misread the line. Parks and facilities. I assume that's the care of the fields and the parks and et cetera. Is that not right?
That one is collective bargaining, and that also is utilities. There are watering for the fields, electricity, those kinds of things which you know have gone up in all the departments, and that's covered in that particular one. Page 34. So that basically is that electricity is the major one in that increase. As you know, the town electricity increased even more than the residential did this year, and so any department that paid electrical costs took a huge hit.
So that's lighting the fields?
That's a very large one.
Is that basically lighting the fields? Is that our major electricity, or is the pool?
Rink.
And the rink. All those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Tim Bowman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. First, I just wanted to thank the Warrant Committee, the School Committee, the Selectmen, the Capital Committee, all the officials for the town and the school who have been working on this budget. I understand that it is not easy and appreciate your good work. I am concerned about the future, as I know we all are, in that we've identified a structural deficit of over $2 million. We already are cutting trees and are going to be living in the dark in the evening without streetlights or with less streetlights. So, and we still consider that to be somewhat level service. So I'm very concerned about going forward and my, looking for some assurance to understand that the fact that we are looking to do a road override followed by a Wellington School debt override with a third override of being an operational override, which will be the third in two years, what if that override doesn't pass? My concern is that the voters may not have the pocketbooks, if you will, or the will to vote for that third override. I appreciate that the roads are very important, but is there a way to package this together so that we would know that the operations override would pass?
I think we're moving beyond the scope of this discussion. I appreciate the comment. Ms. Jones, do you?
I would like to make one response because I think it's relevant also to the lights and other things. The town side of the, general government side of the budget was not level funded. It was $300,000 short of level funding. That's why you saw those major changes, including the tree budget and the street lighting budget, which were the decisions that the town administrator made when he was asked to cut $300,000 out of his budget. So I think we should understand that this is not level service this year. And therefore, we are, I think you're right, going to be facing a difficult time in the spring, and I just hope we can all come together, recognize the needs, there are three of them. One is the roads. We've got to get a more cost-effective approach to the roads. We've got to get that, got to get out of the hole we've dug ourselves into, if you will. We've got to get the Wellington School, and we're going to need an override, as Phil has explained. So I think it's time to come together and get those things passed.
And if I could just follow up, I mean, I totally agree, and I, that all three of those are important, and I personally intend to vote for all of them. But again, I guess if I could just understand the rationale, the order of the overrides is my concern.
I think that's beyond the scope of this discussion.
Okay, I guess, well, you know, except obviously your decision, I respectfully disagree because we're looking at the, if you will, the financial future of this town, and.
I understand, but your question is really getting into the sort of, the politics of all of this. Yes, ma'am.
Arienne Goodman-Balcatti, Precinct Three. I know we want to move along, so I'll make my comment very brief, but before we vote on public services, I just want to make a quick comment about public works. I know that, well, even if you don't have a child in public schools, if you don't use the parks or the recreation programs, if you don't have garbage in front of your house, if your road was plowed, if you have light or not in front of your street, everybody benefits from public works. And I think people tend to forget how important a service it is to the town. And the Wellington project is very important in terms of building projects, and it's a building that's filled with our children. But I would encourage everybody to take a drive down to the town yard and look at the buildings down there, because the Highway Department building looks like it's held together with Band-Aids. And what I hear from a lot of my neighbors is that there's a lack of foresight on the part of past town government, that we wait until things are falling down before we do something about it. So I just want to, I guess as an FYI, give everybody a heads up, this is something that we will have to spend money on in the future. And I think people don't think about it because you don't see the town yard. So even, this may be premature, and fortunately, we have a lot of great capital projects that are going on. Please do keep in the back of your mind that public works benefits everybody, and at some point, we're going to have to be talking about improving what goes down, what goes on in the town yard. And just as an aside, keep in mind that all of the public work, public works vehicles are having to navigate our lunar roads as well, and that creates a lot of wear and tear. So that's just my little plug for roads, too. Thank you.
I think we're ready for a vote under public services. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved. Mr. Curtis, human services?
Moved that under human services, item 520 to 570, the sum of $958,798 be appropriated to be raised by general tax.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved. Culture and Recreation, Mr. Curtis?
Moved that under Culture and Recreation, items 610 to 660, the sum of $2,447,061 be appropriated to be raised by general tax.
Discussion. Yes, sir.
John Owens, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I have the Warrant Committee readout. You said that the rink is close to catastrophic failure, and a few years ago, Town Meeting voted $300,000 for an upgrade of the compressors and a new floor to the rink. So what happened?
That's working just fine.
What's that? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, you talked about the marketing. The market rate for ice in this area is $200 an hour. Belmont's charge is $150. Why is that?
Compare our rink to the rinks that are charging the higher fee. We don't have heat, we don't really have a building.
I manage a rink that in Newton that's open, the sides are open, we charge 200 an hour.
I mean, that's really up to the Recreation Department how much they charge, but I know that our rink is far inferior to most rinks.
But realistically, people are paying for ice, they're not paying for the building. And they haven't really, you said they haven't done anything to market the rink. The biggest user is the high school, boys and girls hockey team. What do they pay for ice?
I don't know.
They don't.
We know an answer to that.
The high school does not pay anything, I'm being told. There's actually a reciprocal agreement between Recreation and the School Department, so the Recreation Department uses some school facilities, and the School Department uses some Recreation facilities, and they don't really charge each other for that.
So what, on an average year, what does the rink lose? About $100,000?
Mr. Castanino, I think you have that figure.
I don't. I don't have it with.
Do you have it, Ralph? I don't remember it. I'm sorry, we don't have that figure here right now.
I've heard in the past it's about $100,000, and this has been going on for years. And it's something, I mean, what, what does the Warrant Committee, what do the Selectmen, what do the School Committee and Recreation Commission and Public Works, what are they going to do about it?
All right, I think the point is made. Ms. Mooney?
Ms. Roderick G. Mooney, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I have a couple of questions and comments about the pool. I was happy to read in the, I don't know if it's still called the Capital Budget Overview Committee, that there is some forward thinking long-term about the pool and the rink and some of these facilities that are not going to be able to be addressed because of our needs on a short-term basis, but on a longer-term basis. But what I wanted to know is if this summer, the pool does fail, I'd like to know from the Rec Commission or the Rec Department that there is actually a plan in place to deal with that failure. So, because we have a lot of families and kids who rely on those swim lessons and services, and is there an action plan that has been laid out so that we can transfer swim lessons over to the high school so that we're not in a lurch? So I'd like to find out on an immediate basis if there's a Plan B for this summer, and then secondly, if there's a temporary action plan going forward. And then I guess my last comment on that is that I would hope that, I'd like to see our town leaders in the Rec Department and Rec Commission really present the fact that this is a little bit fatalistic commentary in here that, you know, basically the pool's going to die at some point. We know that's going to happen, and it's going to close. But I would like there to be a statement that there is a vision for a pool in Belmont's future. There is a vision for a new rink. We have visions for other things in Belmont. We know we can't afford these things right now, but let's at least send a message to the taxpayers, to public funders, people who are out there who might be willing to give money, those angel donors who might be sitting out there, who if they heard a vision, a word of vision from the town, that this is a facility that we'd like to have and we could support, that someone might step forward.
Mr. McKenna.
I'd just like the action plan.
Sure, thank you. Bill McKenna, Director of the Recreation Department.
Bill McKenna, Director of the Recreation Department. First, I'd like to say we had a great year at Underwood last year, and that was due to the great work by the DPW. As far as a backup plan, it's the indoor swimming pool here at Belmont High School. And the school department is extremely cooperative with us. Whenever there's any kind of a problem at Underwood, on short notice, they can get the indoor pool open. And, you know, it's not as good as an outdoor pool in the summer, but it's, it's adequate. And, you know, that's what we'll use if something happens at Underwood. But based on last year, I think we're going to have another very good summer down at the Underwood Pool.
So does that, just a follow-up, does that mean that the programs for the camps at the high school won't, wouldn't be impacted so that there's been thought of the actual scheduling of, of bringing swimming lessons over to the high school because that pool is also used? So I just hope that there's something seamless that's been thought through so that it can just go forward.
Oh, it is. With Underwood, we always have a Plan B and sometimes a Plan C, too, because it's a good thing to have the pool like that.
Mr. Forenzy.
Angelo Forenzy, Precinct 3. There are ongoing conversations from time to time with potential private developers that have expressed interest in providing rink services and swimming pool services and other recreational services. Those are ongoing discussions. They're always of an exploratory nation, nature, but they are never turned off, and we actually encourage people that might have ideas along those lines to approach us.
Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Pastrow, Precinct 3. I remember there was something about the Arlington schools maybe sharing that Underwood pool. I'm, has anything, anybody, because it's very underused as far as I can see, and there's all those people in Arlington only a few miles away.
Well, last year, the Recreation Commission, for the first time, voted to sell out-of-town memberships to Underwood, and they sold out. And there were a lot of Arlington people that did come over, and it worked out well. A lot of people from Arlington, a lot of people from Cambridge and Watertown that wanted to use a pool. So they had that opportunity again this year, and it helped our revenue situation.
Yes, because I think there's all those people with no pool, so.
Right, it did work out well.
Okay, good, so we're going to pursue that this year.
Any other discussion under Culture and Recreation? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It's approved. Debt and Interest.
Moved that under Debt and Interest on Debt, items 700 to 710, the sum of $5,216,455 be appropriated to be raised by general tax.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It's approved unanimously. Capital Expenditures.
Moved that under Capital Expenditures, items 797 to 798, the sum of $2,174,000 having already been appropriated under special warrant articles. No additional action is necessary under this article.
And then we can move on, then?
I would think so. The next one, moved that under Transfers, item 900, the sum of $150,000 be appropriated to the Stabilization Fund for funding OPEB liability, other post-employment benefits, non-retirement from unreserved fund balance formerly referred to as free cash.
Is there a discussion? Ms. Hilkemberg?
Joanna Hilkemberg, Precinct 6. I don't know where else to ask this question, so I hope you will rule this as, as being all right. What's the best way to ensure that Town Meeting not be required to vote on all of these items the night that they're given the information? When I was first, came to my first town meeting in 1985, I was handed the budget the night that we were supposed to, to vote on it, and I was absolutely shocked that we didn't have this information beforehand. Since then, we've developed a system where the budget has been sent out, and I think it was due to a lot of work by the League of Women Voters and perhaps other people who were involved, too. But it's been years since this has happened. And I understand it was probably an oversight, but I, I am still very surprised that we're being asked to vote on the most important thing of all as Town Meeting members when we only get the information on these votes the night of the vote. What's the best way to ensure that this doesn't happen again?
Mr. Yarner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good to see you, Joanne. That will be sent out, this sheet that you had tonight, we'll make sure that it be sent out with all the warrants next year as part of the package. If it's prepared in time, I'm sure it will be.
If it's not sent out, can, how, how, is there some kind of bylaw or article or something that we can vote on to make sure that it's, there's an institutional memory around this that we don't, we are not asked, because it's likely to happen again at some point in the future? I mean, I, I would just like us to think about some more permanent way
Right.
that we can ensure that that happens.
I mean, it is, it is on the website, but, you know, obviously, if you want it, we will have it sent out with the warrants for next year. And Joanne, if it's not there, please call me the first day the warrant comes in, okay?
Thank you.
That's something, thank you.
No, that's an important, let, let me say, as a moderator, somebody's committed to try to make sure that Town Meeting members receive this information. I think this is, this was an oversight, and I think the warrant committee was clearly concerned about the oversight. And so I think you certainly have the commitment of, of the warrant committee, on which I've served for many years, and the moderator, that this won't happen again.
Thank you. I am to congratulate the Town Meeting members who have taken such an interest in this and the questions so far. I think it's wonderful that they've done this with limited information.
Monty?
Mr. Moderator, again, I can't find exactly the right time in this whole budget discussion to ask my question, so I hope you'll permit a more general budget process question. It has come up a couple of times this evening, one with regard to the tree budget, and then Mr. Jones made the observation that in fact, the town's budget this year is not level service, and things have been cut. And so my question is, going for, looking ahead to next year, if the mandate is for level services budgeting for next year, what counts as level service?
Well, I don't think we can... Mr. Curtis, you answer that, sorry.
Monty, there's no particular mandate. I mean, what, what I want to do next year is define, first of all, the amount of money that we have to spend without an override, so we could all understand what it would mean to live under that scenario. We would then ask the, the town administrator and the school superintendent, at the same time, really, to give us what they actually need in order to run their operations the way they think they need it to be run. The, and then we'll have a look at where, at where we are, at how much money we need to raise beyond what we are going to do anyway through our taxes in order to achieve the level of service that we want as a town to have. I don't want to get tied up in a sort of nomenclature debate about what's level service and what's enhanced service. What we want to do is to look at what do we need to run the town in a way that we would like to have it run? And what will it mean not to do that? Now, and you realize that's not directly responsive to your question, that when the warrant committee thinks about level service, which obviously we do, and we've used, thrown that word around a lot, what we mean basically is what you had be, what you had before in terms of personnel and programs. And if unavoidable expenses go up, for example, the cost of utilities, that's not, you know, meeting the increased cost of utilities is not enhanced service. Adding a policeman would be an enhanced service. Adding a teacher would, would, we would, you know, we would call it enhanced service. Just because we call it an enhanced service doesn't mean that we think it's bad. It's just, you know, a way of characterizing what's going on. So for, you know, the tree budget, for example, the fact that we had a zero tree budget or a tree budget that was made up entirely by donations this year doesn't mean that that's the new level service, in my view, anyway.
Mr. Forenzy.
Just one comment, Angelo Forenzy, Precinct 3. I think it's important to remember as we look at the budget, just because we did it last year, doesn't mean we have to do it next year. All right? And I think we need to look at each of those light items to be sure that those expenses are still in line with what we want to provide in the way of community, in the way of services to the community. All right? So it's, it's a, it's a debate that we go back and forth on, whether it's we talk about zero-based budgeting or whether we talk about level services. And, and, and I think we've got to be very careful. We go through a lot of work and a, and a lot of angst in the process of, of going through all of these issues and, and, and trying to come to what we feel is an acceptable level of service, given the amount of money that we have to spend or the sources of money we can find in order to spend that. So, I mean, it's a long process. It starts in December. You know, it goes to, I think we finally got a, a, a budget that we could all agree on toward the end of March. So, you know, it's a three-month process. The warrant committee meets every Wednesday night. The selectmen meet most Monday nights during that process. So there's a lot of dialogue going on. I think, you know, you've, you've sat in many of those meetings as well. So I think by the time we get to Town Meeting, this stuff has been pretty well rung out fairly thoroughly. And I, one of the encouragements I would make to any and all Town Meeting members, that if you've got concerns that you've raised and voiced as you have tonight, it would be a lot more helpful and a lot more effective if those are raised early in the process, very early in the process, where we can, where we can take those points under consideration. Because by the time it gets here, I mean, we talked about, very quickly, we talked about Minutemen and, and not funding Minutemen. Well, if we didn't fund Minutemen, we still have to pay that bill. So we'd have to call Town Meeting back again to vote on it, because we still have to, we have to have the money to pay it. We have no choice. All right? So I think a lot of those kinds of discussions would be a lot more effective and a lot more efficient if we do them very early on in the process. So I encourage all of us to do that.
Yeah, I don't want to...
May I make a follow-up?
Very briefly, because I, there were...
Okay, my cons...